Thank you all for being here this evening for our regular council meeting of March tenth, twenty sixteen. Everyone would please stand. Congratulations, please. Mr. Pratt.
Dear the Father, we thank you for this day for the many blessings that you've been given to us. We thank you for being here tonight to help move the city forward. Would please provide us with wisdom, with understanding, that we can make the right decisions for this community of people who live here. And we just pray that everything that is said and done will be to bring honor to people. We just think we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I do testify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Here. 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 Trustee. Everyone's had opportunity to review the items of the consent agenda, the minutes of February twenty-fifth, it's in the work session as well as the minutes of the June February twenty-fifth, we have a council meeting. Do we have a motion in regard to the consent agenda?
Make a motion, approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Lammer.
Yes. This time we will entertain communication from citizens. If you are a resident of the city of East Ridge or a business owner here in the city, have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. You could come to one of the microphones here at the front, state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes. Okay, we got one. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tom. My name is Curtis Baker, six eight, twenty fuel drive. I know you fellas probably got a lot more on agendas what I want to talk about is more important, but it's important to me and be concerned that if anybody familiar with Buella Drive is anxious to go out on Frawley Road and Camp Jordan, you know, you get a good drive. I've lived up there for probably about forty-eight years and I think I miss your school coming through there over the last quite bit. But it seemed like that the size of the road down there now is just like a garden center. And, you know, it's a shame that citizens don't respect the community to pick the trash up and put it in their garbage or whatever. I was wondering, you know, we had something here at one time, I think talking about a group or something from the courts or something to help pick up trash on the side of the road or something. But, you know, if you go out on Frawley Road and you turn left on Camp Jordan Road, the sides of the road are just lined up with beer cans and cups and trash. It just all looks like a dump out there. So I was just wondering if there's anything that you know what we could do, or maybe I know my wife and I have picked up on Buella Drive and I guess we're going to have to go down and start picking up on the side of the road ourselves. I'm wondering if there's any more organizations or anything we can do on that.
Do we do have, I can clean a manger and piece that stuff up?
That I'm not sure about as far as what kind of specific equipment we might add to help with that.
Yeah, we have streets, but we don't have any, she actually does ride. That's something physically you'd have to pick up by hand. Yeah, it's gonna have to be picked up by hand. I was just wondering if we talked about using some people at the court system on that, where they're in.
Yeah, but this would be a good candidate, this particular area would be a good candidate for that program if someone wants to pass the message along to.
Curtis, I'd tell you, that's what I was gonna say, get with the, get with the court clerk down here and ask her if she could help facilitate or who organizes that, does the police department or the court clerk's office?
The chief of court clerk's office.
Yeah, see if she could help facilitate that. I'm almost positive that she has that program going on.
We can do it, no, it's okay.
I mean, you know, it's embarrassing to people that you've got coming in and going into the park. Of course, I hope they're not too pretty to that, but you know, it's embarrassing for people to ride that through there because it's, it's, if you all ride through there, they're getting into there while it's a terrible inside through there.
Curtis, let me tell you, I'll see numerous occasions where people come out of the parking complex up there with garbage bags sitting on the back of the car.
Yeah.
Just let it fall over.
Yeah, you know, there's four garbage bags and I picked some up and stopped and picked them up. Not why to pick them up, but just run over them and the trash just goes everywhere.
That Chief, yeah, sorry, Chief Williams, could you give the court clerk's office and zip up?
That's correct.
I don't think they hit me by or do something, you know, to get the court made to do away from it, but it really needs to be taken care of.
Yeah, and then this actually kind of raises a good point. You know, it would be, it would be really good to have citizens provide information on specific areas that we can't just turn around and end to the court clerk. It may end up being a backlog of places that need to get cleaned up, but, you know, I think that's probably the most effective way of dealing with the situation is to create a list.
You two years ago, the county, we're probably from the workout, I heard me pick it up, one of our officers had stayed with, with watching.
I know from living on Frawley Road that there's all sorts of stuff that gets chucked out and this, actually this morning I woke up to a sight I've not seen before, there was an entire jug of orange juice in my front yard. I have no idea what that was, but it's amazing. You get sacks of crystal sacks thrown out and just all dinner things.
What we're on Frawley Road to, the police department, I think that y'all need to set up some way to our down at the morning time, early, early at six thirty. I seen one of that stops where he got there on top of the hill, they went through there this morning, had to be new fit, kind of doing that either way.
Yeah, these, these are Buella, and Camp Jordan, they run that constantly, but I know they've got a lot of officers sitting there quite often, but when you go down through there, it's just like this, just a suggestion, you know.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
No, no, thank you. At this point, we will move on to communication from council members. Mr. Bennett.
Uh, nothing, just I.
Yep, Mr. Stewart.
Let me thank you, sir.
Mr. K.
Uh, I fear everybody remembers, uh, Sue, my horizon, Joey, I did it right, she passed away, so everybody remember her and her family. She's been, lady in the court, she had her a year, years and years.
Miss Tacey, the day was from four to eight in that, you're on the night.
Thank you, we will do that. Mr. Pratt.
I have nothing.
I have one thing that was mentioned to me just a little while ago, and council can, we can act on this later on to the meeting if you want to. It's probably my intention, our next meeting, March twenty-fourth, apparently is the week of spring break. And so I don't know, I don't know who is, who may or may not be in town for that. But it might be, might be a good idea to move the meeting to March thirty-first. And this is, March is actually one of the those rare times where we have five Thursdays. So we could, we could move it to the thirty-first and there would still be two weeks, required two weeks between that meeting and the first, first meeting of April, if we had an ordinance that needed to be read for a second time. If there are no, no objections, you know, like I said, we could, we could decide later, but there's something to think on for a few minutes.
I'll be in town either day, so it doesn't, doesn't matter.
All right, that's all I have. Mr. Wood.
No, Mr. Donald.
All right, we'll move on to old business ordinance number one thousand six.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, and ordinance number nine eighty-nine entitled, an ordinance to provide revenue for the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, officially through July first, two thousand fifteen to June thirty, two thousand sixteen, appropriating the same to the payment of expenses of municipal government by designating a portion of the fund balances of the general fund and the DOJ federal forfeiture fund by changing the revenue of the grant fund and by changing expenditures of the general fund, grant fund and DOJ federal forfeiture fund here on second file. Make motion.
Yeah, a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Lammer.
Yes.
Item B, discussion slash take action on positions in administration in building codes departments. This was tabled January twenty-eighth and February twenty-fifth. It will require being removed from the table in order to action to be taken. Do we have a motion to remove from the table?
I make a motion, move it from the table.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Yes, the item is removed from the table and with it being so, I would actually like to make a motion, I move, we create a new position of code inspector for the code enforcement department at the pay that was earlier described, the pay is thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars.
I'll say.
We have a second, do we have any comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
According to this information down here from human resources, pay fifteen dollars there, is that already paid or have to talk about that? The reason why I'm asking is because the last council meeting we had, the application for people to apply, you didn't have no certifications, okay? This time it's got a long business certifications, okay, but it gives it twenty-four months to get off this certification. One of them things is commercial certification, this desire, I told you, supervision, supervisor is a special politics commission. So is this fifteen dollars hour going to start out with this list of things that he's got to fulfill in twenty-four months, or is he going to start out at less than make the pay? If then, if in the twenty-four months he has off it, then we raise it to fifteen dollars hour.
Correct, I'll go ahead and, because this is the beginning, if they had all those certifications, you would raise them to much greater than fifteen dollars an hour.
The reason why I'm asking because that's all the, you don't say any, like the county, it says twenty-five to thirty-six.
Yeah, they just get a salary range and it's how it's an hour.
It's a three for the question. All right, now, at the end of twenty-four months, if this gentleman don't have all the certification, it's the terminators, he is rolled up through to another department and then y'all hire somebody else at Camp Ice to test.
I'll meet with the city manager and then the city manager recommend a termination and that would be the decision of the city manager.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead and tell him.
It says here within twenty-four months of deployment and I just don't see no recommendations to have a big major because it's late right here.
Well, sometimes due to the significance of these certifications and testing, it potentially could take longer than twenty-four months, but you don't want to give them five years. But if you're like we are now, there's several of us that could take more testing, but finding the time to sit down and actually take those tests are limited at this point. But they are what require to be ground certification testing.
Any time before we're going to give them the fuck?
That's not, that's not in the, in the job description, which would be, which we could develop an apartment of policy on that, which I would be happy to create.
At this point, at this point, we would just be creating the position and whatever is, as Kenny said, the, you know, if, if council desires a policy to be created, then they can, they can create one. But, you know, really, this motion, unless it's amended in some way, would just be to create the position and have it available to, to be fitted.
I'd just like to ask one question.
Yes, sir.
Oh, is it mandatory it has to take twenty-four months or can they do it in a year's time?
If it was, if it's possible, they can do it as quick as they can. We just set the twenty-four months out in case there's obstacles that come up. Some of the tests that we're asking for, especially the commercial side of it, if they move towards the electrical certification, that's more challenging, especially if it's not somebody that's, that's been an electrician. And we all know what electricians make, so if you want an electrician to come in, like right now, we have a contract worker that does just the electrical inspections. But if you needed somebody to come in and take the test as an electrical inspector and they only focused on just electrical, then that's, without having that prior base of being an electrician, it's going to be a little bit more difficult to retain that. So, but testing is very difficult for all of them.
I already have a person in mind.
For this, no, sir.
Mr. Merrick, my name.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can we not put a range in there and possibly get someone that already has some of these qualifications? Therefore, the city won't have to pay for them to, to get them, pay for that training, they may have already have some of these qualifications. Can we not put a range in there and try to target someone that does have some experience and already has qualifications?
I would have a, I would have, I would have some problems with that.
I would.
Do we have anybody that you know of?
I think it's more supply. I mean, I would, I would.
I would, I would say.
Well, and I understand, and I spoke with some people in Hamilton County, some other jurisdictions, when we were going, and I've spoken about this at other meetings, when we were going through hiring a building official. And it's difficult, I mean, when we went for the building official, we put it in magazines, nationwide magazines. The one fully qualified candidate we had was coming from Chicago and he paid eighty-six thousand dollars a year as a, as a chief building official. That's not really realistic. I know a lot of that's got to do with location, but the people that are certified, they're not going to leave their position unless they're going to be paid more than they're making now. And other jurisdictions larger than us that have the qualified people are probably going to make more money than what we're going to be paying to begin with. So if we have people that apply that are qualified, that would definitely, we'd have to take that into account when we, you know, made it the offer. You know, the fifteen, like I say, is fifteen dollars an hour starting pay. That's somebody that we come in, we train, we move, you know.
I could slightly tweak the motion to clarify that that's a starting salary and potentially could be more based on qualification. Yes, Mr. K. When I'm sorry, they get a certification or say they get electrical certification, are we going to go ahead and give them a range for getting that or they?
I would like to, I would like to work out a, an increase that's said, but I mean, it's not something that we're looking to do at this moment.
We give them a little bit of.
That's something that would have to be budgeted over time, you know, toward if you come in and you got one certification, it might be a quarter, you got the next certification, it might be a quarter, maybe fifteen cents, you know, there's nothing really said on it.
I haven't thought of that.
Okay, I would.
I thought this was to create the accounting position because we've already moved a personnel inspection into position in the administration.
Right.
I thought we were creating the position back in the back, that we already had this position created for who we moved that person up to the front.
Well, I'll be, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just be point blank. I wanted to, I wanted to create a position in code enforcement. I don't know how the other conversation is going to get worked out because we've already tabled it twice. And if that doesn't get worked out, they're going to be, they're going to be strong out.
I already thought that position was there.
And I agree.
I thought that position was there, moved the personnel, put a readministration.
But.
On the rapid.
I think we need to.
Well, I, I think that there is a, there is a position that is, is being paid out of the code enforcement department still, so technically there is not, there's not an open position currently.
That's correct.
To code enforcement.
Until we create the accounting position.
Until we create another position of some kind, whether it be an accounting position or, or just opening up another position in code enforcement.
That's what I.
And I'll be, again, I'll be, I'll be flat honest, I am totally circumventing a discussion. I, I just, I want a code enforcement official.
That's a natural, be natural, because I think we need to deal with the code situation because there's a lot of them in, they just pass the job on, they're going to have a lot of them, so we need to wait, please get one in code.
So that's, that's where we are. Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to create another code inspector position with a starting pay of thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, fifteen dollars an hour, which is a, a minimum starting salary. And.
If somebody comes and applies, it could be long, you know, like Brad says.
Right, and that, that salary could be flexible based on qualifications. It is an amended motion.
I say.
Okay, all right, I can just withdraw my original motion, you withdraw your second or replace that with, with the new version.
Exactly.
There we go, so Janet, do you, do you have that? Sorry for the convoluted conversation there. Okay, so my, my motion is again, create this new code inspector position, the starting pay, minimum pay thirty-one thousand, two hundred, pay is flexible based on qualifications.
I'll say.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Lammer.
Yes.
And I asked, however, I asked Kenny one thing, during we, for this person, or we want to explain to him if he don't pass the test, or her, you know, her. If she don't pass the test, he don't pass the test, that automatically gets released of the job, is that going to be a plan?
He or she.
He or she.
Will sign their job description and qualifications at the time of hiring, that's laid out what is expected of third and fourth of the city description.
All right, do we have anything else on this? Again, this, the way this was phrased, discussion and or take action on positions, so the floor is open. Anyone else if you want to say anything else or go anywhere else.
Is this all taken?
It, it, it is, yeah, yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, there is at least some degree of resolution. Let's see, we'll move on to new business item A, resolution twenty-five forty-seven.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing approval of a proposal for upgrade and replacement of the city's information technology server infrastructure.
Make a motion, Burke. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, I understand the bids were open today, there was. And there was one bid. Yes, sir.
There was one, it was you writing, criteria for selection of a soul bidder, perfectly entered the system, and they actually saved twenty-two hundred dollars by making a government project, they donated some pricing breaks.
How's your depth, Brett?
What is the total, only thirty, seven, eight, ten, fifty-five, three, seven thousand, eleven, ten thousand.
No question. Ready to go, any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilman Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Lammer.
Yes. Thank you, Captain Wallen.
Thank you.
All right, item B, discussion and or take action on board appointments.
Mr. Merrick, my name.
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, my appointment to the beer board, Mr. Cornell Story, would like to stay on. The library board, my appointment to the library board says that she has never been contacted, not one time, concerning meeting the library board, so my question is, is, does the library board just need to be sought? What, I mean, I don't really see, see a purpose. I don't know. I, I mean, I don't see a purpose.
Does it have? Yes, sir.
They have to tell the library board for another call to, to bring this thing.
Okay.
So I don't think they need all the prices.
Okay, that answers that question, thank you very much for that clarification. The zoning appeals board not appointment. I, I, she wants, she would like to be to roll off the library board.
No.
My appointment to the zoning appeals board, I have left her a voicemail to see if she would like to stay or not her response, and my appointment to the industrial development board, same thing, so. Martin Burns on the IDB. We're not going to vote on these tonight, are we?
We can vote, we can vote on those that are in place.
Okay.
Hey, the IDB boards coming up today.
It's only if your, only if your people were, were amongst those who had the term limit, I think.
Right, who worked it?
My appointee was one of them, Ruth Frawley, and I don't remember the other one.
I think I have that one.
James City, so, yes, that's a, that's an appointee you inherited.
So they were, so they were staggered, those appointments were staggered?
Yeah.
Is that correct? So all of them do not need to be reappointed by me, the person?
I have two officers.
It is, it is, the, the two, the two officers, no, I'm sorry, you're right, I was looking, I'm sorry, I was looking at the list, going just down the list, and. You're right, Kelly Steele is the, the vice chairman, yeah. Right, so that would be there is.
Could.
And for the record, her last name is Still, S.T.I.L.L.
Could we get a revised list here with the dates that our appointments roll off of the IDB? Because the way this is written now, I assume that my appointment was rolled off.
I know there's ones that roll, it may be recorded.
Yes, absolutely.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've noticed here that you said James City was my appointment, also Matt Penley is my appointment, now is that the one that you all voted on as a group?
It is.
So that is actually not my appointment.
Right, I think Curtis Baker, Matt Penley. Those were the two that were not direct council appointees, so those were voted on by the group.
Voted on by you.
Right. I think that the names out beside those names were the council members who placed the name in denomination, but the, the group voted on.
And they have, they have.
All right, Mr. Cagle, do you have? All right, Mr. Cagle, do you have, uh-
Yes, sir. To the beer board, uh, Mr. Charles Snyder, he's retired from East Ridge, Republican. He's address.
Please.
Sixty-one twenty-four Nottingham Drive, three seven four one two, and, uh, Tomlin, we need that.
Uh, not right now.
Okay.
Rather give it to, to-
I have the places, uh, Charles, uh, Charlie Daniels, yeah, there he is. All right, on the library board, uh, Ms. Liz Murphy, I called her, and she requested to be rolled off the board, due to health reasons, and I've got Diana Maystee, DIA, Indiana Day. She lives at sixty-nine fifteen Clay Road Drive. Zoning Appeals Board, Mr. Kennedy, Rick Stay, so, I'm leaving him there. That's all I can think, I'm ready to go, thank you. Uh, on the beer board, uh, we have, uh, one of Mr. Greg Shiplin, thirteen eleven Board Street. Thank you, sir. Okay, and the library, uh, Jane Sharp, at sixty-one twelve Schofield Avenue, and the, uh, other boards, uh- Zoning Appeals Board, uh, we keep the same one on Bill Ross, make same thing, some avenue, planning commission. Industrial, the industrial, uh, one of the, I had talked to Kelly Steele, but she said over, back over. I'll show you, buddy, with the key.
Uh, on the, on the-
Mayor wants to-
Yeah, the planning commission.
Mayor Chris Ross.
Yes, uh, if the council does appoint one, clearly it's Larry, is the, the council joint appointee, so, I mean, if somebody else is just getting to do it, or Larry just doesn't wanna do it anymore, or whatever, uh, yeah, whatever we want to do.
About the personnel, which perhaps will-
I would like to, that's, that's my, my opinion. Again, if, if council, if it's the will of the council to keep it, then we can keep it, but my, my vote, when it comes to time to vote, I, I would vote to distress. Mr. May.
Uh, all mine are today, except on the pill board.
None?
Oh, Jim Thune, back here.
Good.
I'm gonna have to get that dressed up now. What's your head, Mr. May?
Seventy ampay pill ride.
All rest will be staying.
Uh, the ones who are staying are saying, that would be James Peels on the beer board, Janet Peels on the library board, and then Jim Thune, and that was it. Okay. We're fine. The planning commission will essentially stay the same. I've talked to, uh, talked to the folks there, uh, everyone wants to continue, so we will continue as is, that would be my appointees, while I'm on there, unless I choose to replace myself. Eric Davids, Dan Pruitt, Ron Rediger. Uh, zoning appeals board, uh, would like to leave, uh, Steve Leach as my appointee. I have attempted to contact, uh, beer board and library board appointees, I have not heard back from them yet. And on the industrial development board, I had talked to Ruth about several things, but not about coming back home to the IDB, so I need to do that, I have not done that yet. All right, so, did we have a, a motion to approve those names that have been, uh, those names that have been mentioned here tonight that are-
I can motion for it.
Definite. Have a motion and a second to approve those names again that are definite reappointing or, or first, first time appointees, as the case may be. Call call, please.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember May.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
All right, item C, discussion of speed humps on South Smith.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I asked for this to be put on there, uh, about three years ago, the citizens on South Smith Street, and which I, the street that I live on, uh, maybe it's been four years, approached the council with a petition, have speed humps, uh, placed on South Smith, and I've been contacted to, to ask to come again before the council and ask about placing speed humps. Here's, the problem is, South Smith is one of the Hardee's and Burger, and there's a traffic light, one block, the next block over at Max Smith. Problem is, is that between the hours of, say, four and six, citizens from Georgia, because they don't wanna stop the traffic light there at the Capidaze at Max Smith and wait for it to turn, to turn green before they can continue on and turn right down Max Smith Road, they decided to cut down South Smith, and the, the problem is, the school bus unloads there between three fifteen, three thirty, something, somewhere around there, and there's about ten, twelve kids, and also there's several kids that live on that street, and also there's a lot of pedestrian traffic on that street, uh, people walking up and down, actually walking to work, the Hardee's, the Burger King, the Hardee's, McDonald's, and those people from Georgia, once they get down there, I mean, it's like, it's like bringing it to Optimus Drag Street, uh, they just tear down South Smith Street, uh, there's no sidewalks on South Smith Street, and I'm afraid somebody gonna get hit. Uh, it, it is a dangerous situation, uh, in my opinion, so I would just like, and I, I know that, you know, someone's probably gonna say, insurance, TML, well, you know what, the city generally installs, uh, uh, speed humps, and other cities installs, install speed humps, so I'm to the point that, you know what, I don't really care about TML, as far as what their recommendations are, so, uh, I just wanna try to protect the citizens that live on South Smith Street, so, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that sells speed humps on South Smith Street.
And, and I'm, I'm on a second if this was discussed, okay?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second.
If, if we do that, which I don't have a problem, but working on that one. We're probably gonna have to, uh, a mess or two, I mean, once we start. But I, I'm just gonna say, I mean, you know, I feel, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against them, it's just that, I know we've had other people, I mean, if you all do that, we need them to probably run to the backyard, too, that.
That's fine, that's fine.
That would become probably herefield.
I'm, I'm not a problem, but I, I just wanted to point that out, that, you know.
Either, either one or two things.
Well, not by Charlie's cost, neither by anybody.
Last time I remember is six hundred dollars a piece, now that was back when you, Winston Park, I believe, but either that, or I'd like to, with the city man, the interim city manager to direct the police chief to have radar set up on South Smith Street about every other day, and you better have about two or three chase cars, right, and tickets, and every one of them's gonna be from Georgia, so.
I'll, I'll set the straight down from, from, I think, from the red light there, though, they do the same thing where you're talking about, I know what you're talking about, unless you say all the time, they come through the, the backyard, come down by, I think, um, they, they-
Yeah, it's right there by the back of it, and, 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 so they're going both ways.
Chief, uh, Chief Williams wants to. I would, uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor, I would like to address this, um, of course we contacted the pool, TML, got their information on it, and what their requirements are, uh, I would like to have Mike Hayes over at Traffic Enforcement to come up and explain, uh, there's a little bit more to just throwing the speed humps out right now, the requirements required an engineer to do, uh, different types of studying and stuff like that, um, we do get some prices, uh, as paid by, that other cities have paid for that type of stuff, but I'd like for Mike to address that, you give him just a few minutes. Can I say something before Mike starts? Dr. Overeem, this is Frank Wood, have something you can add? I'm gonna say, I've got a pretty good policy to leave, that I'm just gonna read this one right here, that just started my kitchen, it says, "At least two thirds of the residents living within one thousand feet of the proposed humps must afford escalation and agree to pay sixty percent of the cost."
And we do have a, I think, a similar requirement for changing the speed limit, I think, so many people have to, so many people have to.
Based on that?
Yeah, well, they have to sign petitions, and there has to be a certain number of people, and I don't know about the, the cost of that, but, but as far as the petition goes.
Well, they have to be encouraged to apply replacements.
Well, that was, I actually spoke with a gentleman who wrote that program, he happens to work for Volker now, and I just reached out to them, because I basically didn't know anything about it, because East Ridge, our policy has always been, we don't install, because until recently, I know that, not to, the MUTCD, then you can recognize it as a traffic control device, so therefore TML will not even discuss how you can copster the, with that. Well, and over the last few years, Jan Bilton out, or this week, called and talked to Judy Hasley, that's how we got the letter, saying their policy on it, um, and in speaking with the, uh, gentleman, the Volker, which is Gerald, Gerald Bolton, uh, he advised me, basically, this is not just going, it's not the eye test, there's a lot of engineering that goes behind it, it's not just speed humps, or anything like that, there's roundabouts, I'll just actually call a traffic calming program, which we have to have somebody evaluate the city, evaluate the policy that you want to put in place, how do you wanna approve it, how do you wanna apply it? Uh, so it's, it's a lot more to, if we start just throwing speed humps all over the city just by the eye test, you're basically taking a speeding condition, which you're saying it is, which is a hazard, and you're putting something in the roadway, it's also a hazard, so you have to look at, it's doing two hazardous things, cheating the levels that you want to cheat, that's what's gonna happen if you put them on South Smith, they're gonna go the next street over, and that typically increases the speed on that street, because they're avoiding your street, so you have the impact of the whole area by just doing a little change, so we get to know this city, how, you know, basically prove that and move forward with that, and that's what we're trying to set up a program through an engineer.
Do we have any grants, will you, apply for them?
I don't, I, I, I don't know, I don't think so, because this is, it's kind of a debate nationwide, you know, you can find the good and bad and everything on it, and there's, like, I just tried to look at as much as I could and try to give y'all as much information as I can, because, like I said, until Monday, I didn't know anything about it, you know, as far as, because our position's always best, we did not support them, we were a liability.
Who put them on Max Smith?
To the best of my knowledge, that was done as a settlement to, with a lawsuit that we had with, um, seven of the, with Superior Creek, that was an agreement that cushioned the traffic, because the trucker was complaining, I think, of all the traffic going back to the Superior Creek, that's when they had the gates, Superior Creek, they do a lot of things down there, um, the cities happened, and they said, well, we will, we will install this there, which created a really big headache on Hardee's, because I get caused weekly, I still get caused weekly because of there, so if it is, this is not just a localized problem, this is every week, somebody calls a traffic shop, going, I want speed humps, and I want children in place, guys, neither one of them recognized them being.
Councilmember Abbott, I, I addressed the, uh, the speed humps on Max Smith Road with, uh, turning north, we are having trouble with, one said, they're breaking, they're, they're, they're deteriorating, what we are gonna do is we're gonna remove those sets of speed humps, those sets of speed humps, from what I understand, were to be put in place for that lawsuit against Superior Creek Lodge, that was part of that agreement, so they will be removed, uh, probably within the next week.
Because it's a really, really big deal, and you start dealing with, you know, traffic calming, it's starting, because that incorporates, like I said, roundabouts, curbs, bumpers, it's kind of a citywide thing, and, and that's one thing they kind of warn against, was the eye test, we get that a lot, and complaints about speaking, I'll, I'll send JR an email saying, hey, I really have a lot of complaints in this street, he'll go run radar for a week and get one ticket, because the eye test doesn't necessarily meet what you're actually happening, and I do agree, I know that, you know, I used to live over here on the Springs, it's a cut through between Brian and Constance, school let out, that's all the racetrack, so this is gonna be a door, that once it gets open, we have to be sure that how we wanna prepare for it.
Well, that's fine, I will withdraw my motion.
I have a suggestion, some general speed ups, the things that are on the side of the freeway, you know, when you get off the road, brrr.
Rubble strips.
Yes, sir, could we put the rubble strip, uh, two in each lane, and, uh, serve the same purpose, come to a sure way to hunt?
Yeah, it's possible, they're usually, to when you have a stop, you know, when you come up to something that says, yeah, but I don't know, I completely agree with that, definitely. But I completely agree, we did already with it. A lot of issues, I've just been just reaching out, and talking to Volker, just, this was kind of on a personal level, I just, I wanted to, because I met these gentlemen, when we were doing the signal upgrade out here, just to try to find out what the protocol is, there's only five cities in, in the state of Tennessee that have, or are in place, because it is pretty costly, so.
That's fine, I, like I said, I will withdraw my motion, but I would just like to request that some radar be run on that street, between three and five, or three to about thirty, or three and six, or four and six.
What we'll do sometimes, we'll actually put that speed card out, that advises people of how, flashes and kind of warns them, at least if kind of.
It's not, it's not why I'm gonna do that.
Oh, on South Smith?
South Smith, there is no filter.
You don't have to, you just gotta, you gotta-
It did.
Well, I, I, like I said, I tried to get as much as I could over the last few days, kind of, as much, we've never considered it as a real event.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna show the road we got, we can use that tomorrow, so I'll, I'll, I'll.
I wanna, I wanna say, I wanna backtrack for just a minute, I, I didn't remember until I saw Kitty get up and walk out, uh, WWTA appointee, uh, we, I missed that, I'm able to do that back from item B, so, I've, I've talked to Kitty, I've talked to Chief Williams, I would like to make Kitty Kestner the WWTA appointee from East Ridge for the term here. And this, this council has to approve that. Uh, I'm, I'm putting it out there, if, if I can get a motion and a second, I would great, I appreciate it.
I'll make a motion.
Sir.
Motion and a second.
You can break when you're sure, Matt.
He, he knows, he knows.
Yeah, he's, well, he can let it through, so, you know, too late now.
I'm gonna mic my, go over it.
Give it a roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember May.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
Go ahead, cover the personnel, I think we covered all of it.
Based on, as far as whether to keep personnel board or dissolve board, that's really different to discuss that actually. City attorney advises we need to have a, an item of business the next time that is specifically on that. So if we can do that for the next meeting, whether that be the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first, whichever one we decide it is a B, um, be item. All right.
You putting that motion in thirty-fourth and twenty-fourth?
Uh, not yet. Not yet. Uh, let's get through the, the hard stuff. Item D, discussion of Phase Two of Exit One Interchange Project, I asked for this to be placed on the agenda. I just wanted to know, I know we've all, um, city attorney, city manager, council, staff members have, have pretty much been on the same page as, as far as what we're doing and what needs to be done. Uh, I was just wondering if, if the time has come to select an engineer, can we do that? Can we, can we move forward with that part of it?
We ask that it's an R F Q, we got a professional service. We're placing qualifications.
Can we go ahead and begin that process? So I would like to, to, yeah, I would like to take care of all the items that we can take care of now. Maybe if you go ahead and get it out of the way. Diane provided some information for us about financing and, uh, obviously we have two billion dollars that has been essentially set aside for this. A million from the state of Tennessee did not. Half a million from the county, half a million that we've taken out of Street Eight. And, I mean, just, just based on what we saw with Phase One, that we, you know, there's a preliminary estimate and then there is what the actual estimate turns out to be. Uh, it is entirely likely that we will need more than two billion dollars. And so, uh, the question becomes, but how do we, how do we come up with that money? And I think Diane has done some, some homework and has some possibilities for us.
Actually, if you can reach a voter that you can review, swing down in the next meeting, and I can have someone from the board come here at that meeting and she's giving you two options. You can do a variable rate or we can do a fixed rate. And there's the kind of, I explained that one we, that we can draw down as we go. I gave her a two billion dollar estimate, you know, just for her to work with on the organization schedules and things. If y'all want to look at them. Also, you'll be finding there, you have Resolution Twenty-two, Forty-eight, which is our debt policy. The controller, you know, we have to have a debt policy because, uh, we put this one out a little while back here. I got here, uh, on page three, it talks about the types and the limits of debt. And, uh, you also have one in here that tells you, according to our two thousand fifteen audit, what was on the books at that time, what our debt was. Since then, we have paid, we have been paying us some of our debt, so they are a little bit lower than that. But according to the way we figure our debt limit, we can borrow up to seventeen million dollars. That's my, uh, but, uh, right now, on the books, we have six point six million dollars of debt. Uh, but you'll note within the first bullet, it does say that any, uh, anything that we choose to borrow that is within the border region is looked at differently on the debt level. Because it may be paid back differently, you know, if we budget, you know. If we, when we borrow money, we will look and say we're paying it back, sales tax. The border region money will be what we use to pay the debt back. Uh, but it gives you an idea of where we're at on everything. If we do the seventeen million, you know, we can borrow up to ten million dollars. If it was within our debt. Our money rating is still good. Linda said we should not have any problems getting, you know, getting a bond.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Um, one of the things I would like to do is compare apples to apples. So could you also reach out to some of the private, privately, uh, private banks? Such as, you know, here locally, Smart Bank, F S G, Regions, et cetera. And here's where I'm going with that. I wanna compare upfront costs to interest rates, to the terms. I wanna compare the two. I've been told that, that, uh, these bonds, they're upfront, they, they may have a lower interest rate, but their upfront costs are substantial now. I don't know if that's true or not. Uh, you don't have to get into the figures right now, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I'm not going to.
So.
But I will say we need.
I would just like to also, you know, reach out to the local banks here in East Ridge and see what they can do, of course, as well. Let's not, let's not stick with the pool.
Yeah.
Just because that's the go-to pick, let's see what other areas.
Our last one, we did go outside to another bond counselor, I mean, to do that one. But she does have, within what they worked up for, it does tell the cost and everything, so. But we will reach out to them if possible.
Yeah. And, and, and explain to them that you want exactly what she's providing as well. Thank you. Uh, one more thing, if you don't mind, while we're talking about money, could you do, could you check with, uh, Nashville and get a list of hall tax participants in the city of East Ridge? Because I just wanna be sure that the, the hall tax money is, that East Ridge is supposed to get, is coming to us and not going to the city of Chattanooga, like what happened with sales tax.
Auction.
Thank you. It's just a brief note on Phase One of the Exit One Road Project. It looks like it's coming along rather well. Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I may, I think, I was, our councilman cable said earlier that he'd been there talking to, uh, some of the developers, and it's done, and there is a lot of progress that's been, uh, been going on. What I would, what I asked the, the council, I don't know if this leads to getting a city attorney, but we just still don't receive any money from the county. Is there any, should we send them a, a letter requesting funds? I mean, we paid more than, uh, well over five hundred thousand dollars or so for that project, East Ridge funds. Should we send a letter to the county requesting the five hundred that was agreed on?
I suggest you simply call Mike Compton down here.
Okay.
Mayor's office. And if you need to let it file, I'll let you know. No, I'm not, I'm not taking long, but, take it long. That's right. I have ten, seven, which means I have to wait.
Yes, sir.
Oh. Come on. I'm gonna get authority, uh, for, for. I know, so we still have the money to keep?
Yes, sir, we do. We do have the money, the money is in the budget, uh, the money, dollars still in the budget. And that's even after personally leasing property, I believe, that's correct, Diane.
Yes, sir.
So we just still have the dollars in the budget for that station. Um, since the, uh, the last outage of the problem, the council made two weeks ago. I had spent plans the day of, I believe I told you, I thought he asked about it. We've been going back and forth with architect and we picked. I haven't heard back from him this week. Uh, I know I had redrawn plans out, given a lot to look at, so, uh, I know he, we're not the only customer, he has. But, uh, I should be hearing something like, probably in the week. Hopefully by tomorrow, I'll give him the call first thing in the morning.
And you, you have to put that out for bids?
Yeah, I put that out for bid yet, but I'll be, I'm excited on the, uh... Our nature of work first, because we agree with that until we know exactly what we can get out.
It is, um, architect. I know you can contact, how to, you could get out?
Well, an architect that we use as professional service and we don't have to beat it out. This is a local art architect firm that has, uh, been familiar with building fire stations. They built two in the city of Chattanooga, they're building three this time. So that was one of the reasons we're gonna go with this, uh, this department this time.
This same architect before?
No, uh, it's not the same one that built it before, it's architect, the architect that designed the last station is no longer with us, he, he passed away several years ago. Listening to architect, we'll design it again.
Just to tie it to loose ends, speaking of professional services, could I get a motion in a second to go ahead and, and do the R F Q for the engineer for Phase Two? Motion.
Second.
Call please.
Councilman Gravitt?
Yes.
Councilman Verhegel?
Yes.
Councilman Vermeat?
Yes.
Councilman Verstol?
Yes.
Fairland?
Yes. All right, item D, discussion of bidding out new soccer carpet for Camp Jordan Arena and trading in the old carpet.
Make a motion for it.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Then puts it reverse.
It says trade in old carpet. And I was saying the surplus was, uh, last week, they had the old carpet and the surplus needs to be auctioned off.
Come on down.
Yeah, we, we tried to trade it out, we.
No, we had it put on surplus so we could trade it. We don't wanna auction it off around here because.
No, they put it on surplus, that'd be auctioned off.
But we can take it, we can do a trade in, they traded it in before. What we don't want to happen, Councilman, is we don't wanna take a chance on somebody buying that carpet here in the Chattanooga area and trying to set it up to use it against us.
Place is to go out the surplus issue.
Well, can we trade it if it's not, I mean, can we trade it off the champion surplus list to trade it, doesn't it?
It's on surplus, it has to be, they have to come over and bid it.
I'll make a motion and let it trade.
You didn't write it for start?
I think that's right. I don't see a problem with trading.
I don't either, but it's on surplus, it's, so, if somebody would bid it.
We just have to have surplus to be able to have, we just.
Yeah.
It's not on the, if it's not on the internet.
It's not been put on, no, we have not put it on, get it, it was not. Don't do that.
I need to create my motion in to fix the court, trade.
I, I don't know that, I think that, that was your original motion.
Yeah, what?
You approve. I think that is right. So.
Is that a, a thousand dollars trade in?
No, sir, no, sir, we, we need to put it out as trading in and get our price for this. This is ballpark, but somebody jumped on me one time before because I gave a price there and they said, "Then it's a ballpark price." That's what it is.
I just read this, this says you got a very cheap thousand dollars.
Well, that's what we, that's what we believe we can get for a motion. And then since then, there's another company that is talking about, they think they would, would want, want to give more for it. But the thing about it is, until we actually put it out for bid, we're just not, then we'll, then we'll specify exactly what we're doing. Let's put out a bid.
But, but the bid will specify that it's a trade in.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. So the bid will specify only that they will give us the difference.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna deal with green, this purple cover, if the logo goes to no bid?
Well, that's up to y'all, I think, you know. I, I think that we could probably get a whole lot, uh, more play out of it if we, if we use the color out there. I'm not talking about as far as play, then, you know, it'd be good publicity for us, but.
Appreciate it.
It's like two thousand dollars, is that correct, difference? You know, but that's up to y'all.
Be like the woozy blue turf, right?
Exactly, exactly, yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, why don't, uh, why don't we wait until this comes up in the budget? That's, I think we ought to wait and include this in next year's budget rather than doing it. Here we are about two months before we start working on next year's budget. I think we ought to wait and include it in that, uh, and kind of been doing it right now.
Councilman Gravitt, that's what we're doing. If you read here, it says that, so go on next year's budget, but we wanna go and start the process now so that we'll be able to, be able to get the carpet made, get it, you know, we gotta have everything ready to go, but, oh, yeah. Yes, sir, that's, it's on, we're gonna put it in next year's budget, it's not gonna be now, not out of this year's budget.
And, uh, yeah, I think East Ridge Parks and Rec, I think it ought to have its own, its own budget as well. I don't think it, its own fund, I don't think it should be co-megled in the general fund. And I plan on bringing that up again whenever we start the budget discussions again. But anyway, thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second to, uh, to bid out the new soccer carpet for Camp Jordan Arena and trade in the old carpet. Do we, is, is that bid for, or is that motion inclusive of the green turf or a colored turf?
Is that what, and what color? Uh, British word, you know, what?
Mr. Martin?
What? Mr. Martin, what, it lasts as long as?
Well, I mean, neither one's gonna last the same length. And one thing about it is that's carpet sixteen years old. In sixteen years, technology has really improved on the type of carpet we'll be getting. I want to do something in the navy and orange since it was East Ridge colors, but I'm fine with the green if that's what y'all wanna go with.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Sir, sir. Mr. Martin, how much money do we, does the city make off of its indoor soccer league directly?
Do you like the album that was?
Yes, sir, indoor soccer took in one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and four dollars at a penny.
So drag soccer for one year?
That is in total, yeah.
Indoor?
Yes, sir.
That is fees, et cetera. How much did we spend? How much was that again?
Hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred and four dollars at a penny.
How much did we spend? Or labor, utilities?
Well, we gotta spend the labor and utilities where we're playing soccer.
I was gonna say, I would not be able to take on the labor and utilities because it's not figured into the department clause. Because we separated all the sports out. Indoor soccer, we have spent fifty-seven thousand, seven ninety-three, twenty-five. Unless something else comes up, I don't want it. I mean, if I don't have any more sitting here.
Well, I, I would, I would just probably argue the point that you wouldn't have to pay utilities anyway, but because if you've got people in there, you're having, you're using more water, you're using more electricity, H B A C, et cetera. But anyway, thank you. And if, if you've never been, by the way, if you've never witnessed, uh, indoor soccer down there, fabulously fun time, you, you've gotta try it. It's, uh, it's awesome.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
He says something about orange and white.
Navy.
Orange and navy, I hope it's, the motion didn't go orange and navy.
I'll see.
That's the three dollars square foot?
I don't know.
It is, yes.
I think it's around eighteen hundred dollars more.
What?
I think it's eighteen hundred dollars more according to this.
It is, the, it's two ninety a square foot with the green and it's three dollars a square foot with the color.
I think we're gonna go with our coach. Make it a little quicker, we, I don't understand that, and find a way.
Could we, hold just a second, let me, let me express this thought. Would it be possible to get quotes for both and then council choose at a later date?
Yes, sir, we can put it out for bid for like, during the.
I think, I think that would be, I think that would be a good, good idea. So we'll have both sets of numbers. If there is a difference greater or less than what we see here, it could impact a problem, could impact the decision.
That'd be fine.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. And that would be to get bids on both the green turf and the colored orange navy turf. For this year's budget or next year's? To be in, to be in next year's budget. It, it would, it would be, yeah, it would be probably delivered before then, it would need to be set up in November. So, it will be included under Parks and Recreation 2016, but, it's 2017, but, yes. Please, sir.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Are you good, are you, be? Sure, sure. Motion is to, to, uh, bid out the new soccer carpet for Camp Jordan Arena in both colors, green turf and orange navy turf. And also factor in trading in the old carpet. Did, did you make that motion and, later, I said? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rabbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Fairland?
Yes. Final official item is discussing or take action on the LPRF grant. This is the recreation grant, $100,000 grant.
Okay, I'll make a motion for it.
But...
I gotta give you a...
No, what'd you say?
And that's why I think we'll go ahead and do it. Uh, these don't have... Oh, you did, okay, which one did you use? Be the letter first? Okay. Um, also, Councilman, I put two blank ones up there because I didn't, she was able to get the numbers. So, uh, the first one is to rescind. You'll see that along with that, we will return, which of course we technically not return since they hold onto it, uh, the full amount of $100,000. I have gotten the receipts from, or the invoices from both of the organizations we were working on with this grant, which is Southeast Tennessee Department of the District, uh, their administrative fees were $4,000. Uh, the engineering fees that we have so far for Reagan Smith come to almost $2,900, which was $2,140. So, uh, the city would be responsible for that. Uh, I did talk to Diane this week as to where those funds could come from. Uh, she said that we do have an engineering line item, which is 41678254, that the engineering fees we come out of, which would be the $2,840. Or, uh, and then also we have professional services, which is $41,250, and that we could take the Southeast Tennessee development, $4,000 out of. Or Parks and Rec, they have in their line item, they have both an engineering and professional services that we could take that out of. So, uh, for this resolution, it would be twofold. One is to approve the letter, which is attached, and to where you want to take those funds from. So, that would be this resolution first. And then if, then we can discuss the second one after you make this decision.
So, these are resolutions 2548 would be to return the funds, and then resolution 2549 would be if we wanted to take further action.
Correct, then further action would be if you want to apply for the 2016 LPRF. Uh, trying to come up with some options, because at last council meeting, uh, you, I think, either Vice Mayor Rabbit or maybe you mayor, uh, said not to come back and put all at Camp Jordan. So, I made you a list of what you could possibly do at Camp Jordan, uh, what you could possibly do at Springville Park, which is another, uh, piece of property the city owns, and some options that you could get here at City Hall. And I tried to get you, uh, kind of some estimates as to what these things would cost. So, maybe if you wanted to choose, uh, some of the things you would like us to go after. We can go to more than one location. Uh, you could have an element at all three locations if you wanted to, you could put them all at one location. Or you can also decide not to pursue the grant this year, which it would be 2018 before this grant comes back up. So, that would be your, the next thing to vote on would be if you want to be forward and expand to what you want us to try to go for.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. You said something that my ears perked, perked up on. You said that if we return the money, that this, uh, that this resolution states where the money is going to come from.
It says that we will, at the bottom, that we are responsible for the fees, which is the $4,000 and the $2,840. I just, uh, was able to provide you some options via Diane to, uh, see where you would like for those funds to come from.
Okay, okay, so just for clarification, number one, we have not received the 2014 grant. We've not received those funds.
We are rewarded, the only thing that we do is we have to turn them in for reimbursement.
Okay, one's saying yes, the other one saying no.
We never did receive that, correct?
No, we have not received money. No, you don't receive it, it stays with the state. Anytime, anytime we, um, we have not sent in a reimbursement to collect any funds.
That's true.
So, right now, I'm seeing on these two invoices, uh, that have...
Okay, so naturally, it was not sending us the check.
No, they don't, they don't send you a check for $100,000.
Okay, that's what I'm just going to clarify, okay, okay.
But this is, for all intents and purposes, you're saying, uh, we're returning the money even though technically they never wrote us a check and we never deposited $100,000. That's the way most grants work, you know, you, it's reimbursable.
All right, thank you.
I like, like a motion that we, uh, return the money. And get it to 2018, 2018. I've got so much on the plate trying to figure out when, you know, put this, the business thing for two years, hadn't, hadn't anything with it. And, uh, they say it's not going to hurt us to, uh, apply next time. And let us give a little more time, let us see when we're gonna put, put all this.
Take the money out of park budget?
I don't know what to do with it.
Of the $68,000, one year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, she gives three options here.
Either separate them out from the different, uh, actual separate funds, or if you have park, take it out of fully park integration, they have their own line items put in there.
No, we also have a grant fund too, if we take stuff in there.
There is, um, and that, I asked if that was an option too, it can be. Uh, I think we were trying to say that for the matches when we apply for grants.
Exactly. Which that's what in my opinion, what it should be useful for.
Yes, sir.
I don't think it should be co-mainway funds there. I make a motion to approve resolution 2540. Uh, well, Larry has, has made a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. About the...
That's to return the grant.
His, his motion was to return the funds and wait until 2018 to, to apply for the, or reapply.
This, this is new separate resolutions for those trials.
Yes, right.
So, we can address that one, so he's making a motion to approve 2540.
Right, he has. And now, the, the money aspect will need to be taken care of as well. So, if, if there's a place you want to see the money come out of, or, or we can, uh, you could just stay with that motion. I'll second it, I'll second it for discussion, and we can amend it to include where the money's gonna be taken from. I think it ought to be taken out of Parks and Rec myself, that's where it's spent. The, the motion? Yes.
Can I address that real quick? Last time Vice Mayor asked me for the $5,000, I agreed to do it. Since then, we've bought AEDs over $5,000 for the, to have the park and the community center and stuff. And that, that was also out of the budget, and it wasn't planned in the budget.
You bought what?
AEDs, the divulators, to put them where you get to put them.
So, what's our homework? This is an example of why I think Parks and Rec should have its own standalone budget, in this my opinion. So, what were the options, I can give you one more time?
Um, you have, uh...
The grant fund?
There, well...
Potentially.
You can use potentially the grant fund, you have a standalone, uh, engineering fund, you also have a standalone professional fund, and then Parks and Rec also has the same line items within its budget. And then, of course, the grant.
I, I made my motion on where I think the funding that should come from. Is there a second?
We can say, well, we can do...
We have a second, I guess.
The, the motion is to amend the first motion so that the $6,840 of engineering cost comes out of Parks and Recreation budget. That is the motion that needs a second currently.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend. Any other complaints?
Uh, just one, uh, hot situation that, but, uh, hard finding to amend.
I mean, we'll, you know, we'll, I mean, when we make a budget, and I don't make a budget, becomes this fluff in there. We make a budget, we make a budget, then we cut it as far as we can. And then last year after, we cut it as far as we could, and somebody went in and didn't tell us and cut it even farther. So, we do the best we can, whatever you get, we're gonna do the best we can, but that's bound.
I think.
I just, hey, Sarah, something, I have to, I have a meeting, will you, I have to go down to park.
Well, and, and I can appreciate the, you know, the, the thinking that it, because this was a park and recreation project, that it should come out of the park and recreation budget. On the other hand, it was this council that decided to sell the property where the park was supposed to go. So, it wasn't exactly the decision of Parks and Recreation to take, uh, you know, to, to do away with the grant or change the location. We, we made that decision for him. And so, I, I would rather see it come out of the, just the engineering line item. That's, but, the motion we had before is, is to take it out of Parks and Recreation. So, that is what we're gonna vote on right now, that amendment. Roll call, please. On the amendment.
Councilmember Rabbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
No.
Councilmember Stoll?
No.
Fairland?
No. We have another motion. Throw it out there to take the $6,840 out of the engineering line item.
I'll second.
Do we have a second, do we have any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rabbit?
No.
Councilmember Cagle?
No.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Fairland?
Yes. All right, now for resolution 2549, do we want to do anything now, we will wait?
You want to read now?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, 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 we, that was just it, that was just the amendment, we, we still have the actual original motion, I apologize. So, we have the original motion as amended, which would be to, uh, to return the funds. It basically would be to approve resolution number 2548 with the $6,840 of engineering costs coming out of the engineering line item in the budget. That is, the new motion as amended.
I'll second.
Well, it's, it's already got a motion and a second.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rabbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes. And... Okay. And then resolution 2549, again, this is to decide what we want to do moving forward. We want to attempt to apply for another, for the, another round of this, this particular grant, or do we wait until 2018 cycle? First, I mean, first, I'd, I'd just like, like 2018, I just want to put off that until, time we get the money and decide what we can do with it.
Do you have a motion? Second, I'd like to discuss this.
Sure, we have a motion and a second, wait until the, the next cycle.
I'd like to have workshop on what we put, where and in what parks. I was like, Springville Park, Russian Room, walking track room, with a flood running down there. Every time that water gets up, that Russian Room is gonna be a workshop.
Yeah, it would have to definitely be engineered so that wouldn't happen. These are just some ideas, that's it.
Put a lantern down there, that'd just be a home for the homeless.
You can lock it up at night time, but you don't have to keep it...
Large cabin, uh...
That's true.
They could do that, though.
You know, times like this, I'd like to discuss that, go and do it, while...
And you're correct, sir, we would need to, uh, we have to have not only just a regular workshop to decide on what the first application might be, but you also have to have, uh, community, including meetings like we did before. You have to have two live ones, and then you can coach you on Facebook, and that's what we've done. Uh, and you have to have so much time in between them, and they have to be at certain times of the day, or different times of the day. So, and we only have it till April.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to wait until the 2018 cycle to apply for this grant again. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rabbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Fairland?
Yes. Last item would be just to decide if, if we want to move the, the next meeting to the 31st. Again, timing works out this time, where that's, that's three weeks away from tonight, but two weeks, it would be two weeks between that meeting and the, the first meeting of April, so we would still be able to, again, have a second reading on ordinance that we needed to.
I just heard, I heard rumors of this $500,000 grant.
That's what this was, uh, we can apply up to, uh, it should be, you can apply up to, unless, unless the state's money's changed between now and then. But this year, uh, you could apply it up to $500,000, which they would match, so you could have potentially a project of a million dollars.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Next, please.
Before we get out of here, can we have an update next council meeting, uh, as to what all grants have been requested or applied for, rather, and what the status of them is?
I'd be happy to do that for you. Um, how far back would you like me to go, just this, uh, year or what we've got going? I mean, because there's so many, it's been one since 2011.
Uh, six months, oh.
And give you all current and then, uh, what we've done in this fiscal year, if that work?
I'll say the past 12 months, I'd just like to know what has been applied for and what we've received in the past 12 months.
Yes. No. No, we did have, it's actually, I can tell you, it's the ADA, and actually, we met on that today at a TPO meeting. Um, there, it's been so long, we've been trying to get, get plans, the plans changed, getting them approved through the state. Uh, we're right now on the approval state of the design, so it's just, it's a momentary... It does, I, I think, hopefully I'll still be here when it gets completed.
Okay, do we have a preference on 24th, 31st?
I'm making a motion.
Move it to the 31st?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, move to the 31st, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rabbit?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Fairland?
Yes. All right, one, hold on, just one second. We have, uh, one other thing that Chief Williams just reminded me of. Anna Rogers, if that's did, contact us. She said, she was trying to get the, the rankings done for tonight. She was unable to do that, she will get them first thing, uh, first of next week, Monday. So, uh, she'll have those rankings ready, and we can set up a workshop and, yeah, and soon thereafter, that's right, we'll be able to, to take off on that.
We've taken three depositions of the principles of Kinsley, we've got, uh, another three or four set for early next month. It's a little bit, it's, it's slow, they're out of, attorney's out of Winchester, it's quite a bull and teeth.
All right, thank you all for being here this evening, be safe.